The Chair. Senator Rodriguez, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vice Speaker. Mr. Vice Speaker, I make a motion to accept the substituted version of Bill 431-31, which is before the body.
Is there an objection to accepting the substituted version? As substituted on the floor. So ordered. You may continue.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vice Speaker. Mr. Vice Speaker, I think it's very important that I share with everyone here and as well as the public and, of course, the Manamku who have been out here in the public hearing room all day with us today. Yesterday, we had the Public Health Director here, we had the Mayor's Council here, we had the Attorney General's Office here for the most of the day to discuss ways to avert a, you know, the contract for GARP/Spema to expire without any other alternative besides another government entity taking over. And at the end of that session yesterday, Mr. Vice Speaker, we've asked the Attorney General's, Deputy Attorney General Phil Tidinko, to give us the proper legal guidance so that we want to ensure that this body does not infringe upon any executive powers. And so, as early as this morning, Mr. Speaker, Mr. Vice Speaker, we had Public Health here again, we had the Division of Senior Citizen Administrator Arts and Augustine here, talking to all the members of this body in the Speaker's Office, trying to find ways to have them administratively be able to extend the contract with GARP/Spema until such time that the Department of Public Health and Social Services issues a request, an invitation for bid, which they should have done back in, you know, three months ago, Mr. Speaker. And so, in working with Public Health, we called in GSA, Claudia Akfaji, the Chief Procurement Officer as well, to request from her any other alternative administrative options that Public Health can use to extend this contract until the right thing is done, which is to issue an invitation for bid. And different scenarios were presented by the Chief Procurement Officer that we had provided for to Public Health. And about 30 to 45 minutes ago, we just received the Deputy Attorney General here at the Speaker's Office, and with all members of this body present, was presented with a version that we have now accepted as a substituted version that would give the Governor of Guam the authority to amend the existing contract with GARP/Spema pursuant to an invitation for bid that the Department should issue. And into that conversation with Deputy Attorney General, Mr. Vice Speaker, we got a call from the Governor's Office that the MOU that was arranged by Public Health and the mayors have been executed by the Acting Governor of Guam. And this is something that I think that is really very hard to accept. We, just before coming in here, we went out there and spoke to our Manamku. The GARP/Spema organization, Mr. Speaker, is not just any nonprofit organization in our community. This is an organization that is run by our Manamku. These Manamkus run the senior citizen centers for the past 43 years. And it's really disrespectful for this government to take them out the way they've been taken out here in this process. And although the Governor has executed this memorandum of understanding, we have the Mayor's Council on record here with us yesterday that said they didn't want to get in the middle of this with GARP/Spema, understanding that this organization really was never given the opportunity to say whether they would not pursue this contract. They were, Mr. Speaker, told in the beginning of this fiscal year to reduce their expenses pursuant to an existing contract they had. But the GARP/Spema board members had a fiduciary responsibility to maintain the contract that they had. And they said, "I'm sorry, government, we're going to continue, we're going to honor this contract that we have with you. However, in the next, at the expiration of this contract, we're willing to reduce our cost." They were always under the impression that the government, for the past how many years, has issued an invitation for bid. Never were they told that, "No, we're not going to give this, we're not going to go out and put this out, you know, through the procurement process, we're going to have another government entity run these operations." And so, we have this substitute version now that still gives the Governor the opportunity to give these Manamku of ours that last chance to be able to operate these senior centers. And I'm hoping that the Department of Public Health and Social Services moves forward with a request, with an issue of invitation for bid, because that's the right thing to do. We know full well that our mayors are ready, willing, and able, and very capable of running our senior centers. But as we heard yesterday, and we discussed yesterday, we see a problem in the very short term, in the very near future, Mr. Chairman. This is a government, this is another government entity, and if we don't provide them, this government does not provide them the financial support, they're doomed to fail. And we don't, we don't want them to fail, because these are our Manamkus who they will be serving in our centers. And I know them, you know, I have every faith and trust in them. But it's the process of how this government operates. These people, the existing providers, are owed over $300,000 for this fiscal year alone. And it's disheartening, as Senator Guthers said yesterday, it's unethical, as Senator Guthers had said yesterday, for this government to say, "We can't pay you right now, but we have this money for the same service that you are providing, we're going to give it to the government entity to run this operation." And so, I'm still hoping that we're able to pass this legislation, and still hoping that the administration can still give that last chance to these, to this Manamku organization. And in closing, Mr. Chairman, I just want to say, I want to thank each and every member of this body, because each and every member of this body were sitting in that Speaker's, in our Speaker's Conference Room today, speaking with Public Health, speaking with GSA, and speaking with the Deputy Attorney General. Every one of the members of this body care for the Manamku and cleared their calendars, except for the 2:00 PM roundtable that was had here, but we were all here, and we wanted to find a solution. And we still feel that there's still a solution to this, and still that chance for this Manamku organization to carry out the operations of the senior citizen centers. So, thank you very much, Mr. Vice Speaker.
Thank you very, thank you very much, Chairman Rodriguez. Are there any other senators who wish to be recognized? Senator Bennett, then Senator Plasch.
Just very quickly, Mr. Speaker, I think that, you know, what we have before us is, has been developed, and it's in response to what the administration have asked for. We heard Public Health said that they would like to continue their service with the GARP/Spema, but because of the failure to issue the RFP, that they're not able to do so within the current legal situation that they find themselves in, and that they are searching for and looking for a way that would allow them to go out for a new RFP and to continue providing the service. And so, this is in response to something that they've been searching for, that they have informed us don't have the legal authority to enter into. So, it's not, we're not trying to force anything upon them. It's like, somebody did not issue the RFP on time. If it had been issued, we may have been able to continue it on a month-to-month and then issue the RFP, but because that didn't happen, other procurement regulations come into play, which then prevents us from doing that. And this is the way that this body has found in consultation with GARP, with Public Health, with the Attorney General, that would allow them to proceed with how they've handled the program over the last 43 years. We're not awarding a contract to a specific vendor, we're saying that you have the authority to continue it, issue the RFP as you always have, allow GARP and Spema and anybody else in the community that may be able to compete for this contract to compete, and then make your decision. And it also continues the process that's in place now, so that we will have those senior center doors opening tomorrow morning. So, I think this is, again, what everybody's been looking for, what Public Health has asked us, what they tell us they want, what they've assured us, what the mayors have told us, the mayors responded to an emergency. This will allow that emergency to be dealt with in another fashion, without, you know, imposing on the mayors, and continue then with the process of keeping those senior center doors open and providing the service for our Manamku in the twilight of their lives. And so, I think this is a reasonable approach to this process. It doesn't demand anything of anybody, it responds to the needs and the wants of all of the individuals involved in the program to proceed in what they believe should have happened, had everybody been doing their job. So, thank you very much, and I hope my colleagues can support it.
Thank you, Speaker Pangolino. Senator Frank Washere.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, you know, I agree totally with the sentiments of the previously, just recently previously retired speaker. And I think what I want, why I wanted to speak is, you cannot overstress the collaboration that existed basically over the last 24 hours with regards to now crafting the amended legislation that is before us for consideration. As was said, you know, this body, and every member of this body, spent almost the whole day today pouring over the information, gathering information, having conversations, not just amongst ourselves, but also with the executive branch. I want to thank Mr. Jim Gillan and Mr. Arts and Augustine, as well as the Attorney Office of the Attorney General, Mr. Phil Tidinko, for being able, and Claudia Akfaji, for assisting this body and being able to find alternatives, find solutions, and find ways to be able to address this issue. I must, we must also recognize that in possibility, in the Acting Governor signing the MOU, he signed the MOU under the premise that the way the law exists right now, he did, they do not have the option. What we provide now in this piece of legislation is that option that they can, and the alternative that they can consider. And so, as was said by the previous speaker, the good gentleman from Baragada, this in no way mandates the executive branch on what they should do. This provides options for the executive branch, options that they themselves said that they were looking for. And so, I too am going to ask my colleagues for their support of this legislation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Senator Esposito, you're recognized, and then Madam Speaker. Are there any other senators who wish to be recognized after these two? Thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I'll also be brief. You know, I'd like to continue to give the administration the benefit of the doubt. And if it's true, as what the Minority Leader and the previous speaker are saying, that the Acting Governor signed this MOU on the premise that he had no other option available, then once this bill is passed, he has the opportunity to sign this bill into law immediately to provide other options. Mr. Chairman, I'm hoping that that's going to be the case. We've heard from Mr. Jim Gillian yesterday that he said he's very satisfied with the services that Spema's been providing, and that had he been given the authority, he would like to extend this for 90 days and do an RFP. Just so we're clear, the legislature's intervention in this matter is not to micromanage the executive branch, we've said it's a procurement issue. And we don't want to start a dangerous precedent to allow the Governor of Guam to start doing services to which these non-government organizations have been providing, in this case, for 43 years. I mean, what are we doing if we're saying we want to outsource these functions to the private sector, but yet giving these very functions to our mayors and vice mayors? I also want to be hopeful, for the record, that we have our mayors who have stepped forward, and under oath, Mr. Chairman, said that they do not want to compete with Spema. So, I issue a challenge to the mayors and vice mayors that they ask the Governor to be removed from this MOU. A concern that we should think about also is whether this MOU has full weight and effect of a contract, and would this, would this just muddy the waters in terms of honoring that contract? And I want to be very clear that this does not. It provides an option, it doesn't, it doesn't ex post facto, they make that MOU, negate that MOU, and have that MOU terminated. But the way to get out of this MOU, and we've asked the Deputy Attorney General to look into whether or not that MOU can be rescinded by one party, or if both parties have to agree. If the mayors step up and say, given the unintended, actually intended consequence, because we all know, as the Chairman said, what's on the line here. If this contract is not going to be continued by the current service provider, there's intended consequences of hurting our Manamku. And so, Mr. Chairman, I'm hoping that this bill passes. I want to recognize the support from both sides of the aisle to give the administration the tools that they've asked for, to ensure that the current service provider continues that contract, and within 90 days to issue invitation for bid or an RFP, so that this can be done through the procurement process. You know, I'm, we have the benefit of technology here, and we always get emails from the front office regarding press releases. And why I'm hopeful but suspect, Mr. Chairman, is in their press release, they say lawmakers work with administration and public health officials, and provided several solutions in an effort to avoid legislative action. Well, the only recourse without legislative action was to enter into a MOU with our mayors. So, that was their goal from the very beginning. And so, if they're true to their word, notwithstanding what they said in their press release, and given that the legislature's going to move to hopefully pass Bill 431, I'm hopeful that they would say that, given the additional recourse that the Governor now has, and because the mayors have requested that they be removed or have themselves removed from that MOU, that this contract with Spema shall continue for another 90 days, and then let the best man win. Shouldn't that be how we bid award contracts or get government services through the procurement process? And I think that's what we're hoping for in this whole deliberation on 431, and we're hoping that by stepping in, we want to avoid that dangerous precedent of insourcing. And that's the message, is we don't want to be insourcing everything and be competing with our NGOs who are picking up the slack in areas where the Governor of Guam cannot provide. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Senator Esposito. Madam Speaker, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to just iterate a little bit on the previous speaker, the Majority Leader, when he had called for that challenge, and I'd just like to quote from page 28 of 31 pages of this MOU, and it reads, "Either of the parties here to, nay, by written notice to the other, terminate this agreement in whole or in part at any time, either for convenience or for default." And based on, of course, that challenge, it means then that if there is this interim time in which then this, once this bill is passed and sent to the Governor, that either one of these parties, and as the challenge was called out to the mayors, then basically is just to give written notice to Public Health to say then that until such time then that the option is given, or the authority is given to the Governor then, based on the law, that then this could actually then happen. Mr. Chairman, we had asked yesterday of the Director to give us the thread of emails that has gone between himself, with GSA, with the Deputy of Public Health and Social Services, with the Deputy Legal Counsel at the Attorney General's Office, and we read through that emails. And the main focus, of course, is that the Director was asking, we're exploring options, what options were available to them. And the option of emergency procurement was brought up, and then that option was shut down. The option then also to extend the contract was brought up, and then they were told that within the law, they couldn't do that. Well, what this bill then actually will do is authorize then the Governor, and the language is, to amend and extend the contract awarded pursuant to the invitation for bid as per GSA. Mr. Chairman, as stated earlier, and I commend every single member of this legislature, all 15 members, took the time to deliberate, to sit there and speak to the Director, to speak to the Division Head, to Claudia herself, to look at many other options that could be made available. And I'd like to share three of those with the public, of course, because I personally spoke to not just the Director of Public Health, Mr. Gillan, and also to Mr. St. Augustine. And these options were given, is that they could go and sole source this, meaning then, and especially after what the mayors had said yesterday, that they have no intention of applying, you know, for the bid then to provide these type of services. So, therefore, this could have been sole sourced out to Spema as being the only nonprofit organization able to provide this service. Secondly, the emergency procurement, because in one of the emails that was written by the Director himself, was that he felt that this could be an emergency, because we're talking about feeding the Manamkus, knowing full well that there are going to be some of our Manamkus out there who would actually look to receiving this meal, and it could be their only meal in that particular day, a nutritional meal. So, therefore, this could have been considered as an emergency. And then the third is Title V of a Guam Code annotated, Section 5217, was another option to consider, that if this nonprofit organization is employing persons with disabilities, not including these supervisors, that this nonprofit organization could have gotten then the contract without having to go out on bid. And it's a process, of course, it's something that maybe GSA, Public Health, would work with the Attorney General. We weren't able to get all that information by this afternoon, but those were options provided to Public Health. And these were options that we even verified with GSA, whether these are viable options, and they said that they are. So, it's not to say that we only have one option and we're going with that option, there's so many. And we took this time to be able to do this. The last thing that we were waiting for was the actual legal, technical language then that we could put in this bill to make sure that we don't then impose on the Governor's organic authority in what he can do. We weren't looking to overstep and mandate that. We were just trying to give the Governor the tools then to be able to then, give him the tools then to say that we can now extend this contract, or we can go and amend this contract. That's all we were doing. And I'd just like to close, because this, to me, aside from what has already transpired, but to me, this is really a sad day for our Manamkus. I'm not just talking about the Spema and the Manamkus are in this program, I'm talking about our Manamkus in general, our Manamkus for the future. Because everything that we do, what we've just done, or what the government, I'll say, has just done, as the Chairman said it, has been very disrespectful to our Manamku. And that saddens me, because the other night I read an email from an individual that saw a performance of our young people doing their Chamorro chants, and they talk about respetu, and what have we done here? And that's why, to me, this is a far-reaching negative impact, is because what kind of a message are we sending? We talk about respecting and taking care of our Manamkus, because if this is how we're going to treat our Manamkus, I can guarantee you, you can wait for the next generation and see how they're going to take care of us when we become a Manamku. And that, to me, the message is far more impactful than this financial decision to sign this MOU. And I ask my colleagues, please support this legislation.
Thank you very much. Senator Palacios.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I may not agree with the excuse or the reason given by Public Health that they don't have the authority to roll over this current contract on a month-to-month basis. There was a time when such action was done, pending, of course, the award of final bid during the 90-day period. But setting that aside, this bill then will clarify that if they don't have the authority, this bill, when it's signed by the Governor, is clear that they now have the authority, because this bill essentially just say that the Governor's authorized to amend and extend the current contract for a period of 90 days, or until such time that a new contract is awarded. Now, the signing of the MOU, Mr. Chairman, will not or does not make this bill moot. The Speaker, the, Madam Speaker just recited a provision in the MOU that either party may terminate the MOU, and in this case, I underline, Public Health and Social Services, that it can terminate that MOU for convenience. And so, let us, let us not say that, well, it's too late. No, 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 it's not too late. We can still send this in, let them then decide if they want this too or not. But this legislature, this is the most that we can do, this is all that we can do, is they're saying they don't have the authority. Well, here is the authority. And so, I ask my colleagues to look at it in this way, do not be discouraged because the MO is just signed. It can be terminated by the government, by either party, for convenience. And I rise in support of you to 431. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Palacios. Any other senator who wish to be? Senator Bobini?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, in the last 24 hours, communicating with my colleagues, I feel that it's really unfortunate that this is just another instance of where our people, our citizens, are caught up in the quagmire of procurement policies or administrative policies. You know, we spent the last 24 hours just talking about figuring out whether an RFP should have been made, could be made, whether a decision, whether an MOU can or cannot be made. And then I looked at one of the thread emails that was sent to us, forwarded to us, and the Director had pointed out two things that jumped out at me, that the result of all of this would mean not only a loss of jobs, a good number of jobs, and you know, in our economy, that's going to be an issue, but also the Director's concern about his, or his sense of lack of confidence in the possibility of having the mayors, you know, take on this responsibility. And I, and I've been vacillating back and forth on whether we should be doing what we're doing now. But at the end of the day, I hope that we all, my colleagues and, you know, and those who are paying attention to all this, pay attention to that, to one thing that we haven't, that I don't think anybody's really brought up yet, other than the services that our Manamku deserves. But it's that we should be holding people accountable for why we're even in this room, why even some of my colleagues took it upon themselves to take on this task. So, regardless of whether we end up with an MOU with our mayors, or we go, or the Governor decides to move forward with extending this contract, accountability should be held, should be, should be put forth towards our Directors, or the people that were in charge of this. We know that this is not the only contract out there that might be held up. We know that this is not the only contract out there that might be held up. We've been discussing some of those, and I hope we don't find ourselves in this room and that our agencies will take it upon themselves to focus in on one thing, the results. We want to provide services, so get on the ball, take care of this, and be held accountable. I appreciate my colleagues in really bringing forth a lot of the issues, because if they didn't, we wouldn't be sitting here today, finding out, you know, this one instance that probably mirrors a lot that's existing right now with other contracts that may or may not be completed, where services may not be provided. And I hope that we won't get to this point again. Thank you, mister.
Thank you very much, Dr. Mabini. Senator Munybar, you're recognized.
Sisus Maasim, Mr. Vice Speaker, and I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. And as I heard intently the previous speaker speak, and the process of how our government is run and the possibility of having more issues come to our attention, I think it's important to know, I, as oversight chairperson for the mayors, understand what the mayors go through on a daily basis and understand that when given a task or when asked to do something, that they would go beyond the call of duty and work for every member within their village and their surroundings. I have no questions about that. My colleagues, I believe in my heart, have no question about that. And when tasked, because something that wasn't done properly was tasked earlier, for whatever reason, was given to them, they said they would support the effort, they would work it through, they would make it work, so no one in that program that exists today will be turned away or wouldn't be able to be provided the services. And when we talk about government and how government is run and what we are supposed to do as policymakers, making sure that Government of Guam is here to provide for the basic services, there is a reason why the procurement process is in place, and that's something that we have to look at. My previous colleagues spoke about possibilities of two or three other issues that may be coming up to the table, and this is something that we are going to have to be able to address and make sure that the accountability and transparency within the different parts of the branches of government are adhered to. So I'm saying that with all the information that our colleagues have received within that last 24 hours, I want to say, as oversight chair of the mayors and believing that the mayors do everything 24/7 for their people in their villages, I just want to say, I have to, with the information provided to me, that I will stand in support of Bill Number 431-31COR as substituted on this floor. Sisus Maasim, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Munybar. Any other senator who wish to be addressed? Thank you. Senator Rodriguez, I believe you wish to close, or would the majority leader wish to?
Thank you very much, Ms. Chairman. Ms. Chairman, there being no other senators who wish to speak on Bill 431-31COR substituted on the floor, I move that we rise from the committee of the whole on this matter, on the bill introduced by Senator Rodriguez, Peter Wampad, and A.B. Palacios. And that before we rise, I want to just take a brief opportunity to thank Director Jim Gillian from Public Health. We had the assistance of Deputy AG Phil Tydinko, officials from SPIMA were here with us, as well as the mayor's counsel, President Melissa Savaros, some mayors and vice mayors were here, as well as its executive director, Angel Sablon. And the other Manomko that have endured our session, Mr. Chairman. Having said that, I move that we rise from this committee of the whole on the matter of Bill 431, and the version is as substituted on the floor and with the recommendation to pass.
Is there an objection to the motion to rise with the objection to? Hearing no objection, so ordered. The committee of the whole will recess and allow the speaker to assume her position.
Senator Especho for the bill is on engrossed.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, on behalf of Chairman Rodriguez, who has sponsored this bill, yourself, and Senator Palacios, and also the vice speaker who chaired the committee of the whole, I wish to report that the committee of the whole has risen on the matter of Bill 431-31 as substituted on the floor, and that the committee of the whole's recommendation is to pass. And so at this time, not with saying the House rules, I move that we place this bill in the voting file and that we vote on this bill without engrossment.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Clerk, please read the title of Bill 431-31COR.
Bill Number 431-31COR as substituted on the floor, introduced by DG Rodriguez Jr., JT Wampad EDD, A.B. Palacios Sr., an act to provide for a limited extension of the contract between the Department of Public Health and Social Services and Gov. Guam Association of Retired Persons, Servicio para el Manomko, GGARP, SPIMA, to provide senior center services for the comprehensive management, operations, and maintenance of the senior center operations program for the Division of Senior Citizens, DPHSS.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada.
Yes.
Senator B. Anthony Ada.
Senator Lynn Gitt.
Senator Frank Blas.
Senator.
Vice Speaker Benjamin Cruz.
Senator.
Senator Chris Duñez.
Senator.
Senator Judith Guthertz.
Yes.
Senator Sam Mabini.
Senator.
Senator Tina Munybar.
Senator Adolfo Palacios.
Senator.
Senator Ben Pangalina.
Senator.
Senator Rory Especho.
Senator.
Senator Dennis Rodriguez.
Senator.
Senator Manas Silva Tyron.
Speaker Judy Wampad.
Senator.
Senator Eileen Yamashita.
Senator Sam Mabini.
Substitute Bill Number 431 is duly passed by this body. Congratulations, Manomko. Senator Especho, a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move that we adjourn subject to the call of the speaker.
On the motion, no objections. The session is adjourned subject to the call of the speaker.